Please be seated.
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the council's first council meeting of the triennium. Namhinoi kēkoto katau. It's good to see everybody's here and dressed up for the occasion, and I love your new suit, Peter Gilbert. I do want to congratulate all the elected members on making it this far to your first meeting. It's also great to see councillor Lee here, and we'll get you underway and sworn in shortly, councillor Lee. I'm very proud of the team we've been able to assemble through the democratic process. You all deserve to be there, you've all worked incredibly hard. You've been judged the best candidates and elected the best councillors for Wellington for the next three years, and I know we're going to do a very good job. Our work programme is very ambitious, but I want to make sure we deliver on the pledges that we've made throughout the election campaign, and we deliver in the best interests on behalf of the city of Wellington. I wish you all the very best. There will be rigorous debates, but I hope we work together as a team. Now, let's get to the order of business. We do have, I do want to acknowledge councillor Dawson. Brian, are you there?
Yes.
Who, we have a digital presence. He'll be acting his votes via video conference. And councillor Dawson, you are able to vote, but your presence won't be counted for the purposes of a quorum, not that it's necessary anyway. Now, I call upon councillor David Lee, on behalf of the Southern Ward, to make your declaration and sign the declaration as well, councillor Lee.
Faithfully and impartially and according to the best of my skill and judgment, execute and perform in the best interests of Wellington City, the powers, authorities and duties vested in and imposed upon me as a member of the Wellington City Council by virtue of Local Government Act 2002 and the Local Government Official Information and Meetings Act 1987 and any other act.
Congratulations councillor Lee. Councillor Dawson, who is here. We'll also accept the apology from councillor Dawson for absence on council business, but we have him here on a teleconference. Okay, thank you councillor. Thank you councillor Free, and hopefully that won't be required. Can I have a mover? So I'll move, do I have a second, councillor Foster? I now put the motion which is to be moved and seconded, all those in favour please say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, I declare the motion carried. There are no announcements to be made today, I don't have any conflict of interest declarations that have been recorded. Would anybody like to record a conflict of interest? And for those new councillors, it only relates to pecuniary interest. We now have to approve the minutes of the ordinary council meeting held on the 26th of October 2016, having been circulated. I move that they be taken as read and confirmed as an accurate recording of that meeting. Do I have a second, councillor Marsh? Those in favour please say aye. To the contrary. I declare the motion carried. Now, we have one public participant. We've got Oli, on behalf of the Wellington City Youth Council. Oli's going to talk to us about the priorities of the youth council for the 2016-2019 triennium. Oli, great to see you, and you're always very welcome.
Thank you very much, your worship. Good afternoon, everybody. As the mayor said, my name's Oli Micky and I'm a member of the youth council. And I'm here to talk to you about the priorities that we want to work with you over the next triennium. Our chair, Siobhan Davies, does send her apologies, she's unable to come here, but I'm quite happy to be here in her absence. The main issue the youth council wishes to raise with the council is the proposal of having a non-voting seat on two of council's committees. Now, this was an issue raised back in 2015 when I was deputy chair and councillor Wolf raised the issue, and it had a lot of support from various councillors, but we decided that because it was coming up to an election, we decided we'd leave it until the election took place. And so, we're here to raise the issue of having a non-voting seat. And I think this raises three benefits for groups. It raises benefits for yourself as the council, for the youth council and for the young people of Wellington. For the benefits for council, it would be a very positive benefit to actually have young people at the table. Young people have a direct say in the decisions that you make as councillors, because the decisions you make particularly in your long-term and annual plans will have a direct impact on them and their futures when they are the adults of the city and potentially some of them sitting around this table. So having the youth council here would be a positive step to ensure that there is always a young person's voice in council decision-making. The youth council, particularly over the four years that I've been on the youth council, has produced some amazing advice to council, and I think that that would actually be enhanced through having a youth council representative at this, not at this table, but either on the city strategy committee and the long-term and annual plan committee. We've done a lot of work, particularly on the long-term plan, back in 2015. Engagement last year on the annual plan. And we've proven over the years to become what we were, which was not a very effective youth council in terms of submissions and engagement, to one that is recognised across New Zealand. I've been to a number of Low and Northland Youth Council conferences, and a lot of those have recognised the youth council as one of the best youth councils for actually changing council policy. On my first year, I was involved in the Our Capital Spaces submission, and we really got the message that, you know, open spaces aren't just for young people, they're actually for everybody. And that's one of just a number of things that we've had an impact on. And having a youth council representative on the two committees that we are asking you to consider would make sure that there is a link between the submissions the youth council makes, engagement with young people and the decisions council makes. It also means that we'll be able to work with you more closely and more effectively, and I think that's definitely something. We've had a lot of wonderful councillors over the years. Through the hair councillor Day is one of our new ones, and we're looking forward to meeting you this afternoon, councillor Wolf and councillor Marsh. And working, I think, having a youth council representative will increase that across all the different aspects of council we've put in here. Issues of transport, economic development as priority areas for the youth council over the next three years. Also things like the establishment of a rainbow advisory group and access to health services for young people, as well as increased civics education. And having this, having a seat on council committees would mean that we actually be able to enhance that, enhance the policy advice we give to you through our submissions, and also the information we give back to the people we represent, the young people of Wellington. So that is really it, I just ask you to just have a think about that. This is an issue quite close to the youth council's heart, and we've been considering this for a long time. We think that it'd be a very valuable resource for you, for us and for the young people of Wellington, that there is good decision-making between young people's representative and council and the city's representatives. So I do ask that you give some consideration to this, and thank you for your time.
Thank you much, thank you very much, Oli, and it's great to have you here and always keen on having you back in the future as well. Thank you, Oli. Councillors, we'll now move to report 2.1. Now, this report, well, the maiden speeches for first-term councillors is a new tradition, which I've sought to enact this term. In the past, as new councillors were elected for the first time, there was a tradition that the first time they spoke, we'd give them a mild round of applause, regardless of how interesting or less the topic was. Whether it be on the dog policy, on a traffic resolution or any other matter. I think it's a significant achievement to be elected for the first time to council and perhaps worthy of the opportunity to speak and say a little bit about yourself, your history, your ambitions and why you're here. So it gives me great pleasure to accord you the opportunity to give your maiden speeches today. I'd like to call upon councillor Calvert, and just remind you all it is required that while as you speak, you stand as I should be now. Councillor Calvert.
Thank you for reminding. Kia ora kato katau. Greetings, everyone. I'm very pleased to be here as a newly-elected councillor for the Onslow Western Ward. I feel very privileged and humble that many people in my local community supported me in my decision to stand for council. My family, husband, adult daughters and granddaughter, along with friends, have been incredibly supportive. And without this, I would not be here today. This environment is not new to me. My professional career is deeply rooted in public service. This combined with serving my community through various representation and advocacy work from champion embedded bus shelters, questioning council's approach to medium-density housing, and then the hot road traffic changes, has given me a good insight into how the work of the council is conducted. So all these community matters that I've been involved with have a common thread. Not enough involvement of the local communities early on. So I want to make a difference on how things are done. If we get better at the how, then we'll enable us to deliver more of the what in the future. So I do have a strong sense of what I'm getting myself into, but also what I want to achieve. And so I've got three priority areas. First is suburban communities. Providing better connected and stronger communities that have their needs addressed in a more integrated way. So that means a focus with community facilities, town centre development, housing development, local business growth and infrastructure upgrades, and ensuring those things are connected. My second priority area is around city assets and services, and that means protecting our public assets such as Jack Illagreen, Frankitts Park, getting the town hall up and running, and also ensuring our core services such as roads, street lighting, water services are well-maintained and fit for the future. And my third priority area is transport, and I will push for a balanced approach to our transport needs. A priority must be on improving the congestion around the Basin Reserve, but I'm not an engineer, and I look forward to hearing the outcome of the Get Welly moving project early in the new year. So across my three priority areas, I have a strong focus on value for money, and as ratepayers, we do need to see added value and improvement in services before committing to any significant rate increases. So I am pleased to be invited, to be appointed to the Finance Working Party and the Audit and Risk Subcommittee. But it's not all about finance. We also need to govern and see our city from different perspectives. We are a city of surprises, delightful surprises, and I want to continue to show our city off and be inspired to what, as a city, we offer to our residents and visitors. In this regard, I'm also really pleased to have been appointed as the council's representative on the Multicultural Council of Wellington and as a board member of Enterprise Wellington, which is the Wellington Museums Trust and has fantastic venues such as the Wellington Museum and City Gallery. But back to engaging better with our communities, and it's probably appropriate that I follow on from the youth community. Underpinning my approach is ensuring we engage early with our local communities and involved in shaping our city's future in a much more integrated way. Taking them along on the journey, the how we do things. It will put us in a much better position to embrace change. I did put my hand up to make a difference in this space, and I'm pleased, as worship, the mayor not only allocated me the community engagement portfolio, but has strengthened this to include community planning. I'm looking forward to shaping this portfolio with my councillor colleagues, council officers and with local communities. It does touch so many other portfolios and areas within council. We need our communities to be strong and to be able to reflect their own characteristics and the diversity within. Certainly not a one-size-fits-all approach. As a good friend said to me, it takes a village to raise a child. As a council, we need to support our communities and village to do just that. So finally, I'd like to add a big thank you to my fellow councillors, colleagues around this table. The encouragement and advice you gave me before the election, along with the support afterwards, has been genuine and bodes well for our own council community and the city. So I'm looking forward to the next three years and delivering on stronger community involvement to help shape our city's future for the better. Thank you. Tēnā koto katau.
Congratulations councillor Calvert, well done. Got a call on councillor Kelby Freeman.
Thank you, your worship. It goes without saying that I'm delighted to be here today. I want to thank those who trusted me with their votes. I want to thank my fellow ward councillors who supported me, or at least tolerated me during the hustings. And I want to thank you, sir, for trusting me with a very important portfolio role of transport strategy and operations, following on from the sterling service of councillor Foster. His will be large shoes to fill. I speak though as a professional public transport and road planner with international experience, so I hope that I will bring some additional resource to the council and ask the right questions at the right time. At one of the meetings in the hustings, I was asked how I would deal with the toxic culture of the council, and I said that I thought it was a beat-up. But I thought that nonetheless, we should all go away for a couple of days, lock ourselves away in a room and decide how we wanted to play the future. There was laughter in the room, I was quite surprised about that and a little bit hurt, and one person suggested we look to Mount Crawford for accommodation. But nonetheless, as you know, this is what we've just done. We've had two very productive days away, and on that basis, I'm pleased to be able to say that I now regard all my council colleagues, the members of the ELT and the folks from Democratic Services as my colleagues and hopefully as my friends as the triennium progresses. I don't expect we'll agree on everything, but I do expect that there will be mutual support and mutual respect as we engage in robust debates. Because mutual respect must underpin all our dealings with the officers, with each other and of course with our ratepayers and our business community. We need to be courteous and considerate, but we also need to offer and take constructive criticism. We need sometimes to compromise, and sometimes we're necessary to challenge. And just occasionally to be a bit uncompromising if we feel that there's something that is important enough for us to do so. Sometimes we'll need to be courageous, because what is good for the city may not always be good for a particular sector in the community or for a particular councillor. This has never been more so than in the roads and transport arena. Our city's roads are its veins, its arteries. They carry the lifeblood of its people in cars, in taxis, on motorcycles and cycles, from one place to another. And of course, the roads carry the trucks and vans that carry our food, our fashion and our furniture. As our population and economy grows, our roads are under considerable and increasing pressure. But we need to be mindful of the uncomfortable truths of road deaths, climate change, pollution and obesity, he says, standing tall, all of which have links to transport and particularly to our overuse of the private car. We need to facilitate and encourage walking, cycling and public transport, and as you know councillor Free will lead ably on that process. But we also need to acknowledge that for the foreseeable future, the car will be the mode of choice and sometimes the mode of necessity for a very large number of people. We need our transport networks to support our businesses as the state of our economy and the health of our economy determines our living standards. We need to ensure that everybody's right to mobility is respected and protected and enhanced. enhanced. We need to ensure that our efforts to improve our environmental credentials don't come at the expense of our economy, which is quite small and fragile. In particular, we need to be courteous but robust and resolute in our dealings with NZTA over issues pertaining to the state highway that runs through our city, and likewise with Greater Wellington Regional Council over issues of public transport. And we will be robust and resolute on those issues. We need to ensure that our desire to spend our ratepayers' funds doesn't cause us to become penny-wise and pound-foolish, but we also need to consider how the decisions we make affect every member of our community, because we cannot afford to be penny-wise and people-foolish. So let's work together, make the best possible decisions, and let's make good things happen for Wellington. Kia kaha, kia toa, kia manua nui. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kelby Freeman. Well done. Councillor Day.
Thank you, Your Worship. First of all, I would like to thank the residents of the Northern Ward who trusted me to represent them, along with councillors Sparrow and Gilbert, to represent Northern Ward at Wellington City Council. I would also like, at this point, to thank councillors Sparrow and Gilbert. They provided me with amazing support throughout the campaign and really gave me a good start, which I really appreciate. I would also like to thank my family. They won't be watching this at the moment, but I would like to thank them publicly for the support that they've given me. It was amazing. For young children, they now know a lot more about politics and how you can engage in your community, which is really exciting. I'm honoured to represent Wellington in the council, and I will work hard and do my best. My background is that I'm a schoolteacher, and also through the campaign, one of the most exciting parts of the process was seeing our local community, the children, telling me that they had told their parents that they needed to vote for me, and that, you know, this is actually a really important thing to be involved with. So I think this is really exciting, because I've managed to reach into a part of the community that I didn't anticipate at the time. So as a teacher, I've always wanted to work with people. I didn't necessarily anticipate that council was going to be my next step, but when I was approached, I had to do a lot of thinking. And I thought, "Why me? I'm a teacher. What's my background going to do with this?" But I actually realised that I have a direct connect into the community, and I know what it looks like for families. When things are tricky, you see it at school. So you see how the local services and the community functions around you. I also see the need for excellent public services that are accessible to all. Like councillor Calvert, I really think it's important that we engage really well with our community. They know a lot about what's needed and can share a lot of that with us. And it's not just about me standing here, it's about a lot of people behind me. So one of the things that really prompted me to run for council was the state of housing for some of our families. Some families are struggling to find houses that are warm, that are dry, and some are actually struggling to find houses at all. And I think that to some of us, that seems a shock and it's very far away, but for me, it was right there, and we're having helped people through that and seen the frustrations. I want to be here to make a difference for those people. As a member of my children's school board, I got to see how I could represent my community. I think a lot of people out in the community wonder how that works and what you can do, but I got to see the difference you can make for people. And so one of the projects that I recently did was to establish bikes in schools at my children's school, and that was really exciting to see how Wellington City Council was getting behind a project that not only benefited directly to the children, but it benefits our wider community. It has environmental impacts, it has impacts on our transport. This is a possible, future, affordable transport for our children. Not everyone's going to be able to afford a car, so it's another way of getting around. Has health benefits, obviously road safety. It's giving our children an awareness of how to be safe on the road. Parents are really busy these days, they don't always have time to do this with their children, so it's really good that the city council can get behind supporting that. I'm also keen to support further opportunities to support the wellbeing of young people and children in Wellington City, so I'm really excited to be portfolio leader for children and young people. It's been a challenging few weeks for me, and it's not just because this is a new job and I'm really having to work hard to find my way. I've also spent the last four years learning Sarraro Maori, and it's been an incredibly challenging journey. I don't think when I started, I appreciated how hard it was to learn a language as an adult. And in the last few weeks, of course, it's coming to the end of the year, and I'm having to do these quite big assessments where we have to stand up and debate in Maori, and there's no English. And so for me, it's been really frustrating because I can't express myself as I'd like to in Maori. So the thing that that's done for me is it's shown me, I guess, how it felt for our two puna years ago when they were told, "You can't speak Maori at school. That's it. It's gone." And I realised that this is, I'm feeling it, in the reverse effect. So it's given me a real appreciation of the effects of that on our community, and how I would like to see that change for the future. So we've got people in our community who can identify who they are and speak the language that represents them. And I'd like to see Maori language become the norm in New Zealand. We're already seeing a lot more of that. People know what whana is, they know tamariki, and I'd like to see that go further, so that it is the norm and people feel that they can, everybody can learn it. And Maori language is not just about the language, it teaches us a value system, caring for the land, caring for people. We've got so much to learn, and I think we can grow as a nation when we really start to embrace this.
Congratulations, councillor Day, and well done. Councillor Gilbert.
Thank you, Your Worship. It is a dream, a privilege, and a challenge to be here today, representing the people of Wellington. As a young man, I was passionately interested in our society, and it was a love of nature that led me eventually along the political path. So thank you to the many people, family, friends, supporters, people here, who have helped me along the way. Thirteen years ago, I moved into Newlands and discovered my local park was a forest of blackberry and gorse. And the neighbours gathered together, and they replaced that with native bush, and they were joined by many other groups that were well-supported, not least by the Wellington City Council. So this was a simple activity that led to an appreciation of just how well our society functions, the contribution that people make to their communities, and the pivotal role of council. I'm delighted that I've been allocated the Natural Environment Portfolio. In a city that is competing internationally, our surroundings give us an edge. Our environment attracts people to our city, and it helps sustain our physical and mental wellbeing. We are fortunate to have a strong and committed group of council officers and many volunteers who have done so much work over the years to improve our environment and to protect biodiversity. So just look at Waingai Park, Orari Wilton's Bush, Zealandia, Tapu Turanga Marine Reserve, and the inner and outer town belts. So it was the late Sir Paul Callaghan who expressed the vision of New Zealand as being a place where talent wants to live. Wellington is surely that. But there is still plenty to do, recreational tracks to build, streams to reclaim, pollution to manage, and transport routes to beautify. It was also Sir Paul who recognised and promoted the view that New Zealand needs to use its skills in science and technology to develop an economy that creates better jobs for its people. We have seen central government recognising this by investing in science and innovation, by having a chief science adviser, by putting science advisers in the various ministries. Local government has a role to play here, too. So Wellington has many top-class research institutions, and there's been some excellent collaboration with the city, not least on hazard mitigation and biodiversity. So I'm really pleased that our mayor has recognised the importance of links between science and the city. In fact, it sends a great signal to our science community. So as city scientists, I'll be fostering those links between science and the city. Wellington has benefited from the global environment, but it's not exempt from some of the less attractive aspects of that. So in my lifetime, wealth has never been greater, but disparities in wealth have grown too. Climate change has to be addressed for our children, for our grandchildren, and even for ourselves. Two recent reports from the Royal Society of New Zealand listed the negative effects, but also gave us some positive suggestions and gave cause for optimism. As I look back, as a born-and-bred Wellingtonian, I would say that Wellington has never been stronger. It has always been beautiful, but it is exciting, diverse, and a great place to be. It has a highly educated population, is compact, and has most of the elements in place for a great future. I look forward to working with my fellow councillors, including Northern Ward councillors Malcolm Sparrow and Jill Day, with council officers, and with the people to make Wellington even better.
Well done, councillor Gilbert. Congratulations. Now councillor Dawson, while he's there, it's a bit difficult through the teleconference to have a maiden speech, and certainly won't have the same level of impact, so we'll have councillor Dawson's maiden speech at the next council meeting. I do need to receive the information. I'll move that, seconded by councillor Eagle. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, a clear recommendation is carried. We'll now move to general business and the first report on the agenda, governance arrangements for the 2016-19 triennium. I'll take the recommendations and report as read. However, I do just want to wish, make a couple of comments. We're moving to one central committee with briefings in advance on a Tuesday, and a number of subcommittees to support the General Order of Business for Council. Why we've done this is to enable councillors to be included in all decisions, to give you the best possible support, and to ensure you're able to get the right information in a timely manner to help guide your decision-making. Couple of changes that have been made as well to help drive organisational efficiencies across the council is the establishment of Revenue and Finance Working Party, and we're also going to review the delegations for the organisation over the course of the next nine months. I do want to note one change right at the end of the report as well around the timing of some of the meetings. We want to have a family-friendly council to enable people, particularly those that have young children at home, to be here and to participate in decision-making, and to also allow them in the evenings the opportunity to get home and spend time with families. So we're moving the committee meeting start time for all of them to 9.30 rather than 9.15 to allow those that have children to drop them off at school. And likewise with the council meetings traditionally have been held in previous triennia in the evenings, we'll move those from 5.30 to 9.30 also. From time to time in extraordinary circumstances, they may need to change, depending on the needs of council at the time, but those will be the de facto times we'll establish. I'm very happy to move the recommendations. I do want to thank councillors for all of your feedback, all of your input, and I am aware of a couple of amendments, one in around editorial changes that couldn't be included in time for this report, and also some changes as proposed by councillor Marsh, both of which I'm happy to support. I'm happy to move, and I call upon councillor Eagle to second the recommendations. Thank you, councillor Eagle.
I'll resume my right to speak.
It's councillor Eagle. Councillor Marsh.
Thank you, Worship. Just a couple of very simple amendments that I had here, just looking through. One of them, editorial, but it does make quite a bit of difference. And bearing in mind the level of respect that I do have for the opinions and thoughts and input of the Port Nicholson Block Settlement Trust, you'll see down there in point eight that we agree that the PNBST will be able to come to the meetings and sit at the table, which is absolutely as it should be. But it must be clear that it is as a non-voting participant, and my recommendation is that we add that in there on point eight. Would you like the second point as well, Your Worship? And yes, you may well be right, Deputy Mayor, that it is in the body of the document, but also point fifteen, where we have the authority to allocate funding from the City Growth Fund up to a total commitment of $100,000, provided that criteria of the fund are met and the decision is made in consultation with the mayor and the deputy mayor. Last triennium, there was some conversation around the transparency, and even though this is below the $100,000 limit, I was proposing that we amend it to add in, and I don't really want to do this because it ends up as me, we add in and the economic development portfolio leader. So the chief executive will actually converse with three people instead of two. Those are the two amendments that I propose.
Thank you, councillor Marsh. I'm happy to accept both of those and to actually include them with the leave of the meeting and the chair's recommendations that go forward. Do I have any objection to including them? I will include those as the chair's recommendations as well. Thank you, councillor Marsh. Councillor Foster.
Yeah, thanks. And I sent through a number of minor changes, and a whole suite of them officers have gone through them, and most of them are okay, some of them are not. So I just, in talking to the mayor, the suggestion was that we have a minor editorial, but in fact, we've already got one in '16, and unless you wanted to put yourself into the minor editorial as well as the chief executive, that's fine, they can pick those sort of things up. So I'm not too concerned about those. But I just wanted to say congratulations on the structure overall. I think it's a very good structure. In effect, the structure is pretty similar to what we had in the triennium before last. The structure we set up in last triennium, I was never particularly keen on anyway, but that's what we ended up with. So I think it's a good structure, and I think it's a good structure to have a central committee. It's a lot more flexible than if you've got a whole bunch of committees, because that committee then meets three times in a month, and it does mean that if something's not quite ready for week one, you go to week two, or if you need to debate it again, you can push it from week two to week three, or whatever it might be. So I think that's a good structure, and I think also the ability to have a briefing on the Tuesday, and that gives you the chance to have a look at an issue, say, "Hey, we want to tweak this or tweak that," or want a bit more information about that, rather than having the thing, an issue in front of you, you have the briefing, you have the questions, and then right straight into debate. And that's a much better structure, I think, to do it this way. And Mr Mayor, can I also congratulate you on the specific acknowledgement that you've made of some of the concerns around delegations, and so that we've been quite specific there to actually say, "Look, we want to have a good thrash around of those." I think that's really, really good, because there are some areas where obviously some of us have got some concerns, and we'll see what ends up coming out of that. There are two things that I did want, or three things I wanted to raise specifically. The first one of them is the recommendation for the long-term and annual plan committee will appoint two additional members to the working party. Can I appeal to you to actually do that sooner? Because the long-term and annual plan committee is not going to meet until, I think, about February, or I think it's February. We're going to have a meeting with Andy Matthews and Marty Reid yesterday. We're going to have at least two meetings of the working party pre-Christmas, and probably one at least in January as well. And it would be really useful if whoever is going to be appointed of that is up to speed with all of those issues now. So either that we do it now, or that it is done through council or CSC at the earliest possible occasion. I think that'd be very helpful. Second one, and I think, I understand, Mr Mayor, that you are not keen on this one, is on page 28, management plans, the authority to approve management plans sits with CSC rather than it being recommended to council, whereas all other policy documents and strategy documents are recommendations to council. Now, anybody who's familiar with management plans will know that they are significant policy documents, they have an enormous amount of consultation. A lot of people who know an enormous amount about these issues and put a lot of knowledge, passion, and dedication to those things make submissions, and sometimes it's quite useful to have that extra step there of having a thrash around at the committee stage, it then goes to council for the sign-off. And that's why we've got the policy and strategy going through CSC and then to council. And it just seems slightly odd that one type of policy document doesn't also go to council for that final approval. And anybody who was here last term, for example, you will recall the significant debate we had on the open space access, which was only supposed to be a minor, a minor thing, but it was a big, it became, a lot of issues came through there. And likewise, you know, if you did dog policy, all of those And likewise, you know, if you did dog policy, all of those things, they eventually end up going to council. Management plans have the same level of debate amongst the community, but for some reason in the structure we've got here, they don't go ultimately to council. I think that's a mistake, but, and that's up to you, but I would suggest to you that management plans ought to go up to council for final approval. And the final one I wanted to raise is just the size of some of the subcommittees. I noticed that most of them are five, some of them are six members, some are five. With five and a quorum of three, especially if one of the five is the mayor, and I know that you will be extremely busy, you do run the risk of losing your quorum sometimes, that is a bit of a concern. And the other issue in that I just wanted to raise, and if it's deliberate, that's absolutely fine, if it's not deliberate, then you might want to correct that as well. The Grants Committee will be the first time we've ever not had the mayor effectively as a voting member because we haven't got that de facto that the mayor becomes a member of everything in a voting capacity. Under the Grants Subcommittee, it is five councillors, the mayor is not there, which means that you would actually have no vote. And I don't know whether that's deliberate or not, but if you did want to correct that, I would suggest that's one of those minor corrections you may wish to make. So I'll leave those with you and hopefully they can be picked up as minor issues rather than moving an amendment.
Yes, they can councillor Foster. Now, the mayor is by default a member of every committee, so if it's not there listed, that wasn't certainly the intention on behalf of officers. I am a member of all committees whether I choose to be or not. Thank you for your comments and we'll work through those changes and discuss that further. Councillor Pennett?
Thank you, your worship. And look, I wasn't actually going to speak, I sort of assumed that my reasonably minor changes were going to be circulated. But just to be clear to new councillors, these delegations are not a harmless document. I always remember reading Carl De Frayne warning new councillors, these are important. This is where we decide who's got what power, so it's going to be really good to be able to look at the CEO delegations and the RMA ones at a later point, because some of us have had some concerns over those for a little while. But anyway, I'd like to thank the officers for the hard work that they put into this. They have gone through now many drafts and I'm sorry that I've had to come up with some more amendments because they weren't able to be incorporated. But while the mayor thinks I'm being pedantic, I'm more a big picture person, but there are just a few things that for accuracy, they do actually matter. So first of all, just making it clear that it needs to be decided whether it's council or CSC who decides the terms of reference for the advisory groups, these are just things you can't just make it ad hoc. Councillor Dawson, I'd just like to let you know that I thought specifically of you. When we look at the areas of focus for the city strategy committee, I've put in your area something around increasing social inequality because it's not just about recreational facilities. Of course, and councillor Foster agrees with me, on transport, it's not just about moving goods. Yes, so that had to be done sustainably and safely, we've moved well beyond that. In terms of the advisory groups, we are not going to, as a matter of principle, review them all, they've been reviewed and reviewed and reviewed. So we're just, there's just a clarification in there to say, we'll do it as necessary. Doesn't mean that we can't add some more in because there may be a push for a rainbow group, for example, but just that we're not going to upset that particular apple cart. In terms of the CEO performance review committee, councillor Eagle and I had a discussion about that, just making it clear that there will be ongoing monitoring of performance, just to make it clear that we're focused very clearly on that. My particular passion in the appointments group that we will aim to have a balanced range of candidates with a broad range of skills so that we do not just have the risk of group think when we look at our people. Sorry, just the mayor, I have made an amendment around this, which is around the memorandum of understanding. You will have noticed that it gives the mayor authority to enter into these MOUs. Now, the problem with this is that one former mayor, who I won't mention, got herself into a bit of trouble because it basically looked like we were committing ourselves to spending millions of dollars after this particular MOU was signed. So there's just a bit of restriction on that power, just to make it clear that we're not going to start making enormous commitments. Councillor Calvert and I had a discussion just around the role of the portfolio leader, just strengthening the wording around, emphasising that it is a leadership role, you're not just there to hurry things along. And my last point, which I did want to get in right away, that if in a case of emergency at the moment, the CEO has authority to spend a million dollars or more without authorisation of the mayor, the deputy mayor or the council, I'm uncomfortable with this. I think it's unlikely that the mayor and the deputy mayor will be hit by a bus. So I've just put some wording in that there must be consultation over there. It's, you know, an emergency will necessarily demand close coordination between the mayor and the CEO. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Pennett. Those amendments, those changes have also been incorporated in chair's recommendations and they are now as part of substantive recommendations. Councillors, no one else wishing to speak on the speaking list? No? I have no requirement for a right of reply. I will now move the recommendations, seconded by councillor Eagle. All those in favour, please say aye. Against, I declare the recommendations carried. Now, move to item 2.3, elected member remuneration. And there's always a great deal of interest in any public monies being spent on elected officials. It is important, this is a matter of public record, to ensure transparency. However, this is not something councillors, that we should be embarrassed about, the fact that councillors need to be paid. There was a period of time throughout the city's history and throughout the country's history when elected officials weren't paid, they did it on a voluntary basis. But as a result, what tended to happen, we only had retired white gentlemen in charge of the public purse and as a result, decisions tend to be made on behalf of wealthy white gentlemen. That's not the type of society we want, that's not the type of community we want. We want people to be engaged and to be able to be engaged and that's why it's important that councillors are remunerated appropriately for the time and effort that they put in. I think it's a responsible spend of money. The remuneration authority allocates up to $164,000 for additional duties for the mayor, the deputy mayor and councillors. We've decided not to spend all of that money, in fact, we've been very prudent about the spend, we're spending far less and so I think that's a wise decision. I have recommended a flatter and I think fairer structure. It is impossible for me to determine who is working harder than somebody else or whether a portfolio, their economic development, social, environment or community resilience is more important and therefore should be reflected through a different pay structure. It is simply impossible for me to judge and hence I think you'll all do an equal job, you'll all do a good job and a fair job and I think it's only fair that councillor portfolio leaders are remunerated fairly and equally. I'm very happy to move. Councillor Eagle shall second. Councillor Eagle, wish to speak? No, do we have anybody else on the speaking list? I move the recommendations, all those in favour, please say aye. Against, I declare the recommendations carried. And now move to item 2.4, the appointment of councillor as a member and deputy chair of the Wellington District Licensing Committee. I'm happy to move the recommendations, seconded by councillor Eagle. Do we have anybody who wishes to speak to the matter? All those in favour, please say aye. Against?
Aye.
I declare the recommendations carried. Now, I want to agree to include councillor Foster and will be nominated as the member appointed to the Wellington District Licensing Committee. Seconded, councillor Eagle, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
It's a little bit like the Simpsons. It's great to have your contribution councillor Dawson. And I declare that recommendation also carried. We'll now move to report 2.5, the triennium meeting schedule on page seventy. Just noting the changes, to move the committee meeting times to 9.30 and also we'll be having council meetings commencing at 9.30 rather than during the evening. Seconded by councillor Eagle, anyone wish to speak? All those in favour, please say aye. Against, I declare the recommendations carried. Councillors? Well done, that's the conclusion of our first meeting. To all of you who have been here for the first time, well done. This is without doubt the sharpest looking council in dress sense that I've ever seen and in particularly led by councillor Peter Gilbert. Well done. Thank you. Bye.[1712.63]